Everyone, am I good? Great. Good evening. Tonight is Thursday, August 24th, and we are here at our last Board of Ed meeting before the school year starts. Kind of hard to believe. Welcome, everyone. And before we begin, we'll say the pledge as part of our tradition. Oh, sorry, I have to make a motion to come back into public session. Seconded by Rory. Motion made by Marjorie, seconded by Rory Aldous in favor. Six, zero. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for reminding me to bring us back into public session. So, as I said, it is two weeks from yesterday will be the first day of school. So soak in those last two weeks of summer. I saw Neil earlier today, and he said, "How was your summer?" And I said, "Oh, my summer is still going." So it is not was.
We had a rewind moment.
Yes, we rewound that. He said, "Oh, how is your summer?" And I said, "My summer is great." So enjoy the last two weeks of summer. I know that things are picking up around here. I know some athletes are back on campus, and our administrators have been hard at work, and I'm sure teachers are probably starting to come and set up classrooms. So I don't know if there are any board announcements? No? All right. Andrew, announcements for you?
Just a couple. As you said, it's been really lovely to be driving into work in the mornings and see the fields and the tennis courts filled with hundreds of students who are busy trying out for various teams last week and this week. And just yesterday, we completed our summer administrative retreat. We were here in this very same room with all 26 of our district-wide administrators, looking over some state guidance, thinking about our learning commitment, and generally getting ready for the opening of school, which we're all very excited about and looking forward to the students coming on September 6th. Things continue picking up next week. On Tuesday, it's new family orientation and ninth-grade orientation here at the high school. On Wednesday, at the middle school, it's sixth-grade orientation and new family orientation in that building. And then on -- sorry, that's on Tuesday also, same day, middle school, high school. It's Wednesday kindergarten orientation in the elementary schools and new student -- yeah, new family orientations at the elementary schools on Wednesday also. So things are definitely getting busier. It makes our lives much happier when the schools are filled with students. That's who we like to see here, as well as our colleagues, who they will come back on September 5th. We'll spend a full day together engaged in welcoming and learning before the students arrive the next day on the 6th. So that's what will be happening in the next couple of weeks.
Great. Thank you very much. So tonight, we're going to have a presentation on enrollment and class size, but before we do that, I'd like to pull an item from the consent agenda. We are very excited to welcome a new administrator to the district. And so I'm going to pull Resolution 12.01 regarding an appointment of a secondary assistant principal. And I don't know if Andrew, you want to say a few things?
Sure. But tonight, I'm very excited to recommend to our Board of Education Mr. Michael Pampa, who is sitting here in the audience with us tonight, along with his lovely family. We're so thrilled that they could all be with us. Michael's being recommended by our middle school administrative team, by Jeff Suadowitz, who's also here tonight, and came through an extensive search process at the middle school, met with committees a number of times, and came through that process, highly recommended to us at the district office. Neil and I had the pleasure of spending some time with Michael, too. Most recently, Michael comes to us, having spent four years as an assistant principal at the Cottage School in Pleasantville. Prior to that, a number of different teaching and administrative experiences. He has two master's degrees, one in general and special education, and another one in educational leadership. So we're thrilled to have someone who seems so well-prepared and comes with such great references. Again, the committees, which included other staff members as well as parents, all were thrilled to get to know Michael, and we're excited to have him join our team. And though he's being only appointed tonight, on his own, he voluntarily came and joined us for our administrative retreat day yesterday. So we're really pleased that he was able to be with us and get to know colleagues and begin to think about the learning commitment with us and other issues. So we're thrilled with that, too. So it's our pleasure to recommend to the Board tonight, Mr. Michael Pampa, to be the new assistant principal at John J. Middle School.
Great. Excellent. So if someone would like to move the motion?
I'd love to. Thank you.
Okay. Marjorie, seconded by Bill Rifkin. Aldous in favor?
Aye.
Six, zero. So welcome aboard, Michael.
Congratulations.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And you can go do the bedtime routine. So thank you. Excellent. Thank you for bringing your family here and welcome to our community. Oh, great. Okay. We go backwards. So our presentation this evening, 7.01, on enrollment and class size. So I don't know if that's -- Neil, you're going to take that away?
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Good evening once again, everyone. Nice to be here. And actually, a little hard to believe that this is my third presentation of KLSD class size enrollment. Yes, yes, yeah. Yeah. There was a summer of '21, '22, and now. So quite thrilling. Little itinerary of the presentation is that we'll go through just the class size parameters, run through the kindergarten numbers overall in our three elementary schools, and then tables for each one of our three elementary schools first. And then we'll look at John J. Middle School, John J. High School, and then a total of where we are, just as a preview of a few things to come. So our first slide here is the class size parameters. And I could draw your attention to the grade level bands on the left-hand side and the goal and the range. These are our contractually obligated goal and range and numbers that we have for our sections, depending on the grade. And you'll see throughout the presentation that we're within the goal and the range, regardless of the grade in the school. And we'll be sure to point out some spots just to draw your attention to. The kindergarten slide, so the next few tables work very similar. Just looking at over the left-hand side there, October of '22 is where we were and the number of sections of kindergarten in each one of our elementary schools. And you can see in that column, if you look to the center, a little bit to the right of the center, the August of '23, we're at 178, which is a little bit less than where we were in October of '22. And something to point out with the asterisks there is that one -- that the single asterisk includes a special class enrollment. So that number 74 are the number of kindergarten students within the district, and that also includes our special class students at Increase Miller, whereas the double asterisk there of the class sizes, 16 to 18, does not include the class sizes, our special classes, not included in that class size number there. But you'll see them a little bit later on, actually in the next slide. This table is --
Can I --
Oh, sure.
Do you want me to hold questions, or do you want to, as we go through the slides?
Whatever. Yeah, yeah.
Are we -- are these numbers locked in? Like, I know sometimes with kindergarten, people sort of maybe show up late, or I don't know, they're trying to find properties in the town. How confident do we feel it's -- not substantially, but it's 20 -- it's maybe 10% less than we anticipated. And so do we feel confident that this will be the number at the beginning of the school year?
Yeah. I mean, is it locked in at exactly 74? I couldn't promise that. I can tell you that I looked at the pending enrollees coming into the district as of just a couple hours ago, and I don't believe we have any pending kindergarten coming in. We do have enrollees, I think, at almost all the schools except Increase Miller, but they're not in kindergarten. So it's very close. I mean, it could increase a little bit, but there's no pending withdrawals at the moment for kindergarten, obviously, at the moment. So it's going to end up very close to that pending something.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, no, it's okay. I was going to mention the pending. It's a great question.
I think we can also add, though, as a public school, there's no cutoff date, right? So anytime a family shows up, they want to register for our schools, they live in the community, we're going to enroll them and register them. So can always change.
Yeah.
It's the grade we have least insight into, right?
Yeah, it's the trickiest to project.
To project, but now, at this point in the year, you would expect that all families have registered and they know.
We would think so, yeah.
It's close. Yeah. I mean, yes, we would think so. And like I said, there's -- I don't see on the list any pending kindergarten enrollment, but that doesn't mean someone can show up tomorrow, or three families show up tomorrow, right? So there's nothing to stop them from doing so. The next table here is Increase Miller. And again, the left-hand side is really dedicated to where we were in October of '22 and the class size and sections there. And really want to draw your attention to a couple numbers here. One is the total enrollment for Increase Miller. You can see where we were last October and where we are now at about 427. And at the moment, as of today, there are no pending enrollees or withdrawals at Increase Miller. Doesn't mean, again, that it can't change tomorrow, but just as a snapshot of where we are today. If you look at second grade, there are 94 students there in four sections, and our class sizes are 23, 24, which is under the range of 25. We know that's close, and we keep an eye on the numbers as we go through the year. But just in speaking to Carrie Ford, the wonderful principal at Increase Miller, she's very confident that the students are going to experience the full depth and breadth of second grade, and she does not have any concerns about those class sizes. And again, they're under the range of 25. Should also note, I mentioned the special class students before, and then there we have 14 right now, so the class sizes are six and eight, and they're split up K to two and three to five, and that's your two sections there. Katona Elementary, here, again, similar setup of the table from Increase Miller, with looking at the left-hand side is where we were in October and where we are now on the right-hand side with the number of sections. You can see there's an increase in one section at Katona Elementary total. That has to do with a fairly large kindergarten class last year, which now are our first graders at 79 students. And those have to be at that fourth section. If we were to be at three sections, like the rest of the school, the class sizes would be over the range for first grade. Again, also, I think just something we want to point out is fourth grade at KES at 24 to 26, again, well under the range, but a little bit more than Increase and Meadow Pond. But again, Ms. Harris is very confident about the experience that the students will have, and sometimes those class sizes are 24 to 26. The rooms are a little bit different sizes, so I think Ms. Harris thinks about the total square footage in the rooms and how many students are going into them. For Meadow Pond Elementary, one of the areas we want to point out here is that during the budget process, and thank you to the Board and the community for supporting the budget, is that we asked for fifth grade at Meadow Pond to have three sections and not two sections. So even if we were to take two sections at fifth grade at Meadow Pond, we would have about 26 to 27 students in each one of those sections, and we would be under the range. However, one of the elements that we kept kind of discussing and thinking about deeply during the budget process was, you know, thinking a little bit about smaller class sizes, but also at Meadow Pond, and what we learned from the principal, Ashlyn Field, and the assistant principal, David Bornisne, is that when you have two sections, it's very difficult to schedule and service some of the students that require different kinds of services, and it just makes things very awkward. So this really helps just the schedule in general and putting people with students when they need to be with students. And so hence the increase in section from 14 to 15. So total elementary, so where we were in October at 1,238, the projected, which was based, I think, on the demographer, and where we are now, and Rory, to your point, that might fluctuate a little bit. Like I said, we do have some pending enrollment and really not many withdrawals at the moment, so that number could go up a tiny bit in the coming days. We can always go back to elementary school if you have questions. John J. Middle School, and we've talked about kind of reading the numbers on the diagonal. For sixth grade in October of '22, those students now are represented in the seventh grade row in August of '23 at 208. And the same can be said of the seventh grade students at 253 are now our current, eighth graders at 249, with an increase there from 662 to 671. And I'm sure you know this, but the sixth grade in August '23, those were our incoming sixth graders, fifth graders last year. John J. High School, similar, the table can be read in the same way, 921 in October of '22, and now around just under 900. I will say there are some pending enrollees coming in, so that number may go up just a little bit.
I think it's interesting to have such a big jump in our senior class. It's interesting just from a --
Yeah.
Like 10 new senior students.
Yeah.
Do we have, I think, just given that that's probably, maybe that's -- maybe I haven't noticed it in past years, it seems a little easier. Do we have resources in place for students who come in new in those more senior grades?
We do, we do. I mean, that would certainly come from the guidance department and just, you know, I think a lot of interface with Stephen and the assistant principals, I'm sure. Can certainly ask about it. Interestingly enough, our -- the pending enrollees as of today are freshmen and sophomores.
Okay.
Yeah, incoming, still need, you know, some more support, of course. Total district enrollment, you can see where we were in October of '22 and where we are now in August. And again, just speaking to Rory's question, are we locked in? You know, that's where it is, you know, right now, but like I said, there are pending enrollees, so there could increase a little bit.
Something just seemed askew to me because I was sort of trying to track the increases and decreases across kindergarten, then IMES, KES, and Meadow Pond. And something just wasn't adding up as I was taking and tallying. And then when I did the math, maybe it's just something to take a look at, when I looked at the math, October '22, I totaled those columns for each of the four sections.
Yeah.
And then I totaled the August 23rd columns, it just doesn't reflect what's on the --
Which, which --
Which one are you on?
Which slide are you on?
I'm sorry. So if you flip to the fifth slide, maybe? Go down. Yeah, next one, next one. There.
Okay, I can explain. So this is where it is simple math. So what happens is, is that when you look at kindergarten at Increase Miller, right, that's 74 students?
Yeah.
Right? So that 74, that includes special class students. But when you go to Increase Miller at 427, like that also there includes special class students, that five there.
They're double counted.
There are students that are counted, they're not counted twice in the total, Rory, but they're accounted here in kindergarten to reflect part of the incoming kindergarten enrollment, and they're reflected in that number of, where it says 14, they're reflected in that number. And so when I added up, I didn't want to double count students, if that makes sense.
That does make sense, and that definitely helps get closer, but it doesn't answer. So maybe just --
Okay.
It's, I don't know if it's nitpicky, but there's definitely the variation between October '22 and August '23.
If you're looking at the Increase Miller slide, is that the one you're looking at?
Looking at the total.
Oh, the total altogether?
I'm looking at the total, yeah. And I'm trying to come back to that total, like figure out, okay, you know, you would think that October 2022, we're saying we had 1,238 students.
Yeah.
You would think that if you totaled each of the October 2022 totals?
Yeah.
That you would hit that number. But you do not.
Right. Neil, I do think if you go to the Increase slide, I think we have made an error that we'll just have to correct, but the, if you look at the second grade where the 57 is, I think that's in the wrong place.
Okay. So we can go back and look at that and repair it.
It would be a huge increase.
Sure.
Yeah, the 57, I think, is in the third grade last year.
I'm not coming from a place of, oh, my God, we should check the math. I'm coming from a place of, I'm really interested. I had thought, and I just had this conversation with Bill right before we started, I had thought that our enrollment had kind of begun to bottom out and was kind of flattening, and might even, we might even be seeing an uptick. And I was a bit surprised when I first saw this, that we're looking at a reasonably significant decline, and I was surprised by that. And so I'm trying to just make sure in my own head that, you know, I'm thinking about the curve correctly over the last, I'll call it 10 years.
We do think there's a little bit of a decline this year, primarily coming from the less-than-anticipated kindergarten enrollment.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's where they -- but I think there's just some things in the wrong cells on the Increase.
That's fine. I'm not, you know what I mean?
No, but now we need to fix it, though, just for sure.
Yeah, yeah. But my interest is really, you know, are we bottomed out? Are we still declining? Was that just a --
It's a 1%. I mean, it's 1, it's .09.
Overall, but the kindergartners are down 13, over 13% from last year.
You know, that's where, that's where we see the decline, right? It's kind of a bull.
The other thing is sort of locked in, you know. We are still having a thing where coming in, one side of the snake is smaller than coming out the other side. So it's still going to go down, but this, I don't recall a decrease that significant in, never mind the projection, just in the October '22 to August '23 kindergarten class is down 13%. That's, I guess that ties into the housing market or something. I mean, that's a significant decrease.
When we're looking at October '22, those are this year's first graders. Right? So we don't want to compare the numbers in the left.
I think they're just saying in general, like we had 280 some odd, or 200 some odd kids that came in kindergarten?
Right.
In one year, and then the next year, we only had 180 some odd.
Last year's kindergarten total added 205.
Right.
And this year's kindergarten total is 178.
I just want to point out that I think that what happened here is that the slide on Increase Miller that says October 2022, I think that whole column is actually October 2021.
Yeah.
Because I just went back to last year's presentation, and that's the October 2021 column?
Okay, that helps.
Not the August, what was then August 2022, which read 89 in first, 82 in second, 57 in third, 87 in fourth, 87 in fifth, special class at eight. At that time, again, that was August 2022, not necessarily exactly the same as October 2022, but I can see that those are over 2021's numbers.
Okay. So is the bottom line different?
You're still going to see the dip, similar, and it's in kindergarten. Yeah.
I'm also surprised that we have a decline with the apartments opening. I would have thought we would have seen an increase with those Golden Bridge apartments opening.
So maybe let's just review that.
Yeah, well, so I think we should review it, and then if the Board wants it, we can come back and present later on in September, just to update the numbers.
Yeah. The reason I'm raising, when I did the math, and your seven students notwithstanding, so when I did the math, I saw that it's actually an increase at the elementary level of eight students, and then you, and now I understand that there's seven that may be double counted in my calculation.
Yeah, double counted, yeah.
So it actually looks like the numbers are flat. Now, I could be, I could be wrong in my math, but something isn't just adding up quite right, and I really want to get it right in my head. Are we, are we trending downward? Are we leveling off?
Yeah.
Because it's relevant for other things, you know?
Do we think that those numbers are correct? Just maybe the previous slides might not be correct.
I'm not sure.
We'll have to, we'll have to double check.
I'm just doing the back of the envelope.
And shoot it out to us again, we can play with the math. I wouldn't feel like I'm doing my job if I don't complain about something. So for those of you who are longtime viewers, I do this every year. This gentle pushback on the class size. So you mentioned it already, the Meadow Pond fifth grade, that it's three sections at 17 to 18 students. It could be two sections at 26 to 27, which is still well within the range. But you explained a little bit that there's other benefits to having three, other than just smaller class size, a scheduling thing.
Right, right. Yes. Do you want me to elaborate a little bit more?
A little bit.
Yeah. So what we learned from the administration back in the spring when we were proposing the three sections, and that go from three to two, is that for whatever reason, and I can't claim to know the exact machinations of the scheduling, but when there's two sections and the students that were in those sections that required different RTI-level services and that there are teachers who service the students in those classes, and those teachers have their own separate schedule apart from the classroom teacher, and the teachers need to have some, you know, sometimes it works in grade level bands where they might work with fourth and fifth graders, they might work with the whole school, it just depends on the need of the student. And for whatever reason, the two sections were, was a barrier to creating a more flexible, doable schedule for kids.
There wasn't as much wiggle room?
No.
To move things around.
No. That was my understanding in the spring when we were having discussions with the school about this.
Okay.
Or I should even say winter.
Can we just go back to the final slide and then Bill's question from a moment ago? I am confident in that total from October 2022, because it's the same number that we projected as a total in last year's budget presentation as an actual number, and the projection is the same number that we were projecting at that time, and then the current enrollment, August 23, I think we are confident in that number. I think we are seeing --
These last numbers?
I think we are seeing that decline, and I think it's primarily in those kindergarten numbers.
Yeah. I'm almost sure that my, my calculation is incorrect because of Marjorie's observation around the number on KES, so I think now it's coming together.
No, but we still need to. I still need to.
Yeah, we'll correct this slide.
We'll correct it, yeah. Absolutely, yeah.
So then the decrease, it is 1%. It's more just, it's, we're not done with less coming in than going out. You know, so it doesn't seem like we've really hit a gator yet, because.
You have a question? Sure. Over the past three years, we've had over 100 students estimated by the demographers. That was high. Is that, you think it's because the demographers are estimating correctly and kids are going elsewhere, or students going elsewhere, or they're just being optimistic as to projections?
So.
That's hard to say.
I know. It's a good question.
That is a good question.
Yeah. I wouldn't know what conjecture on that.
We've had a decrease of 121 students in the last three years, and the demographers have said we're going to have an increase of over 100 kids.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to understand what's happening.
Understand what's happening.
Yeah. And it was 50, I think it was 50 sections last year in elementary school, now there's 52, but there's 12 less kids.
Yeah.
Or students. I'm trying to, and you answered part of that before.
Yeah, so it's the unevenness of grade levels, sections paralleled with the number of kids you can have, right, in a certain section, and the unevenness of grade to grade. And you can see that there's increases in some grades, and some grades stay the same and some grades, so that's.
And which school they're at.
Yeah.
Get me shifted around.
In my experience, that's like with, with school districts that are zoned the way we are, you can get the unevenness.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
I do, I think, I think it's important to stress here also, though, that, first of all, the demographers will also echo what we always say, which is, coming into kindergarten, it's the hardest class to project, and that any decline that we're seeing, we know is regional.
Yeah.
We know it's not specific to Katona Lewisburg, because we've looked at the districts outside our neighbors, and they've seen very similar, if not in fact greater, declines. And it does seem to be geographic, because as you go down county, you know, that's, that's where you see the trends to be a little different than they are here. So I don't think it's Katona Lewisburg specific.
Right.
Do we track the kindergartners by age? Because I wonder if there's an increase in the parents that are holding kindergartners back till they're six versus five.
That's possible. My understanding, and Andrew can push back this, it's the looking at the live births from, you know, however far back you want to go, five, six years. And then, so that's the prediction. So it's, it's hard, so getting back to -- Bill's question's hard to know if it's students that are just, were never here, right, in it's hard to know if it's students that are just, were never here, right, in the first place?
Right.
Or here and leaving. So I...
And I don't, I don't think generally we've experienced older kids coming into kindergarten. What we do sometimes experience is families will keep their children out until first grade. Then they'll enroll at that time, which is why we sometimes see an uptick in the class size from kindergarten to first grade.
I think also, I mean, I'm not a demographer, so I don't mean to speak of demography. But I mean, I think some of the standard measurement methods that they use to do the projections, they do a projection based on the demographics of the female population that lives in the community, and they make a projection of live births from that population. And we happen to be a community where a lot of people come into the district, they move in with a three and a five-year-old, right? So I think it makes our area a little bit more challenging to use sort of the standard practices that they use to make those projections, which makes the projection somewhat not that accurate. And no discredit to the demographers by saying that. But I think, you know, it's hard to do a combination of maybe like volume of real estate sales, but then it's who's buying those houses, how many people are moving, intra-district moves, et cetera. So I think it's, I think we have a particularly, I think some areas where you, where you don't have people that, I think in some communities where people generally, like, they come in, they buy their house when they're in their twenties, and then they start their family. Because of the cost of living here, I don't think that happens. I think generally people start somewhere else, and then they come here with slightly older children who are about ready to enter school. So that's my unprofessional demographic analysis. But I do think it makes the demographic projection somewhat wonky sometimes.
Yeah. If, if that's the case, and if we've overestimated three, four, five years in a row, we should try to scale back.
Yeah.
What, what they're coming up with.
And then, but then you have like, I mean, I can tell you, like, in, one, two, three, four, five, six, eight years ago, like at Increase Miller, we had 57 new students in one year. It was, you know what I mean? And, and I, you know, I remember it specifically because we had a new families committee, and I had been the chair, and I had recruited someone to chair it and said, oh, it's so, it's easy. There's like, usually there's about 15, 20 new students, and you just match them up. It'll be no problem. And then literally in one year, there was just, so I think some of it, we had 57, so I don't know.
But I think it kind of think, you know, has us thinking too, next time that we meet with a demographer, I was just saying to Lisa, that these are questions to ask, too.
Yeah.
How they, what instruments they use, and how they come up with those numbers specifically.
And if COVID changed things, maybe the moving patterns, who's moving where, at what stage of their family building?
You know, and we tend to ignore the confidence ratio when we get the demographer's report, but they'll always tell you, if it was like plus or minus 5%, so they'll tell you, yeah, we hit the number.
I do feel like anecdotally, there's a lot of small children running around when they go to stuff in town, right? I feel like we see a lot of young families, so.
There you go.
I feel that they're coming. They are. Thank you, Neil, very much for pulling that together.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for the feedback. We'll get that fixed, for sure.
We'll fix that column.
Yeah.
I think this is probably the least, in my tenure, the least controversial class size discussion that we've had. I mean, the numbers have fallen very nicely. Oftentimes, we get that sort of 1751 problem that we're grappling with, and I think the numbers are pretty clean this year. And, yeah, thanks. Nice job.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we are at item 8.01, public comment. I don't see anyone signed up. I don't know if our, okay, okay. That's why I just want to make sure. So we don't have anyone here for public comment, so we can move to the consent agenda. And as we just, we have one item that we had already pulled out. Does anyone have anything else that they wanted to pull out from the consent agenda? No? Okay.
Oh, I did notice, I'm sorry. I think there just might be a typo on one of the coaches' names. I think the last name is the same as the first.
Oh, no, that's correct.
That is correct.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Their first name and the last name are the same name.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Great, thank you. For Marjorie, seconded by Rory. Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you, 6-0. And we are at, I'm going to make sure we didn't have any gifts. Okay. So board dialogue and discussion, I don't know if anyone wanted to bring anything up. Marjorie?
I'll just briefly mention that last week was the first NISBA Resolutions Committee meeting, and they had a high watermark of 56 resolutions that had been proposed. That includes, I think, 15 or 16 that were sunsetting, and then the remainder were new resolutions. We had a four and a half hour discussion. And there will be more information forthcoming in terms of, you know, where the advocacy is going to be focused. And then we had our first Legislative Advocacy Committee meeting this week on Monday night for West Putt, and that was also really well attended. So feels like advocacy is in the air already. And I'll keep everybody updated as more substantive platforms come into focus. And by all means, if board members have topics or issues that are on our minds, you know, this is a good time to be thinking about them. And I will just comment that it was interesting that three out of the 56 resolutions this year pertained to electric vehicle legislation and the mandate. And two were very targeted and adversarial, and basically said, like, rural districts should be exempted from the mandate, or the whole thing should be repealed. And then another resolution was much more, I would say, sort of friendly to the legislation and to the mandate, and called upon the state for like a feasibility study to come up with a process whereby districts maybe could apply for extended time or a waiver, this sort of thing. So I just thought it was interesting. You know, we're in a really great position here in Catona Lewisboro. As we've said before, we're piloting that first bus. It's very exciting. But this is causing a lot of stress across the state for districts that were not as well positioned to be where we are. That's it.
Thank you.
You got it. Just on top of that, we had, you sent it to us, Andrew, a long letter from the chancellor of the Board of Trustees of the schools, as well as the attorney general, talking very specifically about DEI work. Is there... Are they responding to some incidents or some sense of what's out there? Because it seemed like a pretty, you know, a call to attention.
Yeah. Well, in some sense, I'm hesitant a guess as to what they're responding to, but I think they're responding to both incidents around our state as well as around the country to make it clear that the work is to continue here in New York. And I think it's, they want to be clear that it's a high priority here in New York. And that, I think, I think one of the issues is that sometimes you'll hear folks say that this work happens at the expense of academic learning. And I think we want to be very clear in saying that's not the case. It enhances, we think, focus on belonging and DEI and making sure that all students feel welcome in school enhances academic outcomes. We don't see them as separate at all. And I think New York State wanted to make a clear stand and say, we value this work. We think it's really important, and we, how schools will continue doing it.
And was that the feeling of these committees? Is that, you know, sort of, we're in this era, and this is blooming? Or was there contention over that?
It's interesting that you ask this question, because what I would share is that this NISBA Resolutions Committee meeting includes representatives from across the state. I represent our area, which is Area 10. And to the extent that there were resolutions on this matter, they were pushing back against some of the guidance and the call to action. And I'll probably leave it at that, except to add that, by contrast, there was actually a resolution to advocate for, I'll call it, climate change-related curriculum. And there was an interesting discussion that ensued about that, because the position taken by NISBA, generally speaking, and by West Putt, is that we want the state bodies to stay out of curriculum altogether. So although many of us feel a call to action and urgency around educating our students and being good stewards of our infrastructure and our electric vehicle and our non-electric vehicles, et cetera, you know, nevertheless, we weren't able to get as far as to say, and there should be mandatory curriculum that should be implemented. So there definitely were a couple of different ideological conversations that were happening, but not necessarily consistent with some of the messages coming from the leadership of the Board of Regents or the Chancellor of Education.
We were very diverse.
But that doesn't mean those resolutions passed, or that NISBA will, will, will adopt them. But it's just, you know, for full disclosure, in terms of the resolutions that were floated. Yeah.
Is the representation sort of, you know, because New York State sort of has very diverse geography, and there's definitely a downstate, upstate thing. Is the representation sort of like our senate, where everybody gets two, no matter the size? Or is it more like the House of Representatives, where it's based on population?
It's more like the senate, I would say. If I had to pick one or the other, definitely more like the senate. And I do find these meetings very informative, because it helps to really better understand some of the issues that are pressing in other parts of the state. And sometimes I find myself supporting resolutions for things that, you know, we've never had to contemplate here in our district, or even more broadly in the region on West Putt. So it's very informative. And, and then there are other issues, for example, security-related matters, where there has been for a time, and it was sunsetting, and I think the sentiment was to pass it and act it again, around security expenses being exempt from the tax cap. You know, many districts feel unduly burdened by the costs associated with keeping kids safe, and feel that that should be an exemption from the tax cap. So there will be continued advocacy around that. There's also an ongoing effort to increase the salaries that are allowed to retired police officers, just, you know, sort of, again, in keeping with security, this has been an issue, you know, who can we hire, and how much can they be collecting from their retirement and then earning if we want to hire them? You know, so again, things that we don't necessarily discuss when it's our budget deliberation time, or when we're thinking about hiring security personnel, but that, you know, you can tell there's actually a lot of stress around these topics in other parts of the state. So those are just a couple of examples.
Interesting. Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Anything else? Great. Okay. So future meetings. Our next meeting is Thursday, September 14th. That's the next meeting of the Board of Education here in the library at 7:30. We have an audit committee meeting on Tuesday, September 26th, at 6:00 PM in the district office. We have our second Board of Education meeting in September on the 28th, also at 7:30 here in the library. And the next day, at 9:00 AM in the district office, there'll be a policy committee meeting. And we will be, first day of school, September 6th. Sorry, 6th, I was going to say 5th. 5th for our administration and staff. So we wish them all a great, both the staff first day and our students a great first day. We won't be here before then. So I hope everyone has a great start of the year. And if someone wants to make a motion to adjourn, we can wrap it up early tonight.
So moved.
Marjorie, seconded by Lorraine. All of us in favor?
Aye.
6-0.
Thank you, Julian.
Thank you.